Okay, y'all, we'll get going here at 6 o'clock. Welcome to Monday, February 22nd study session of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools study session tonight. I know Enrique will be joining us a little later, just so everyone knows that, virtually. And then first up is purpose and agenda with Dr. Stala.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. The purpose of study sessions is to share information, to build trust, and to ensure effective and efficient decision-making at the board table. This evening, we have an opportunity to provide you with an overview of our budget process, where we are, what we know, and where we're going. So we will look for some direction from you as we move that process forward this evening. And then we have a lot of policies that we will be taking a look at. Leaders have done a great job working through those. And then the other thing, under superintendent relations, because of the most recent announcement that we received from MDE and Governor Walz, I do want to provide an update with where we are in planning for the secondary return of students in person. So that's not formally on the agenda, but underneath superintendent relations, that's something that I would like to share with you as well.
Okay. And so just looking at our, under our district's governance and policy, our board working document tonight, as Dr. Stala stated, we're going to be spending a little time, well, quite a bit of time, actually, in the policies. We just have those final three to kind of continue through, and the 200s. And then we have some in the 400 and the 500s. And then the bulk of this evening will be spending operational oversight under the budget. So I know Julie's prepared an extensive document for us to review, so we'll be going over that this evening. And so with that, I think we're at that, the budget.
Excellent. I've got the first couple of slides, but it looks like Julie and Jim are making their way up. So thank you, because I'll need some support to help advance the slides. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we do want to share with you some information regarding our budget and the process as we work through the 2021-22 budget. We always, thanks, Jim, you can go ahead and advance that.
I'm failing at this miserably. Why isn't it going? Oh. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. As always, we begin with our strategic plan. Do you want mine? No. And the promises we have to our community to continue fiscal responsibility as we work to provide an excellent education to our students so that our mission can come to life. The outcomes this evening are for board members to understand the state of the budget and the budget process that we will be using throughout the 2021-22 fiscal year. And then additionally, as I mentioned, we will be seeking some direction from you. So as an overview, there are several key points to share as we begin this evening. As we enter into this budget adjustment process, we currently have a $4 million budget deficit. We propose to solve that and gain financial stability through a balanced budget over the next two years. This means that for next year, the 2021-22 fiscal year, we are proposing a $2.5 to $3 million budget adjustment that will be realized through a combination of both budget reductions and additional revenues. This proposal, which we will be seeking board direction on, will bring our fund balance down to the lowest parameter of our school board policy. As I just stated, that policy calls for a fund balance of 8% to 12%. Revenue continues to not keep pace with expenditures, even though we've implemented strategies over the last couple of years to assist with our financial stability. Last year, our enrollment did not meet budgeted projections, resulting in a budget adjustment of $3 million for the current fiscal year. Additionally, the board approved a revised current-year budget in December, where we helped offset additional deficit spending. In the revised budget, as you recall, we saw savings through reductions of school and department supply budgets for the current year. Additionally, we did not fill several vacant positions that we have for the current year, and we used the federal funding dollars we received to support additional expenses incurred because of COVID-19. I'm sure many of you saw the headlines in the newspapers today, including this headline from the Associated Press in the U.S. News &amp; World Report. Minnesota Public School Enrollment Drops 2% Amid the Pandemic. Public school enrollment in Minnesota has dropped by about 17,000 students as families turn to homeschooling, private schools, and delaying entry into kindergarten through the pandemic. And I just want to pull one other quote from that article. MDE, the department said, "The change was driven mostly by younger students, with public kindergarten enrollment dropping 9%, even as private kindergarten enrollment increased 12.4%." The department also reported a 49.5% increase in homeschooled students. So I just think that that is important context for our school district, and then again, kind of some important information across the state of Minnesota today. We know that is true for us, as we have 262 students less than our projected, our budgeted projections. Additionally, as we know, state funding has not kept pace with inflation over the years. And COVID, with COVID-19, the state budget also has a shortfall, which will impact schools. Even though we heard the governor's budget proposal, we still believe the parameters approved by the board at a 0% increase in the basic education formula for the first year of the biennial and a 1% in the second year are responsible budget assumptions at this point. Additionally, we've had many increased expenditures due to COVID, which were offset by the CARES, ESAR, and GIRS funding we received. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Julie to provide an update and an enrollment overview. Thanks, Julie.
Good evening, Chair Ruel, Dr. Stala, and board members. We always, we have been looking at this for the past several months, our enrollment, and we see a slight increase from February 1st to February 15th. It is not at our elementary schools, unfortunately. We continue to lose students at our elementary, and we're actually gaining at our high school. And so typically, over the year, we see a decrease at our secondary, and we're pretty stable at our elementary. That is just a change for this year. These are our enrollment projections, which you've seen for the last couple of months. An increase of 188 students in year one, the board approved this. You can see that we're utilizing the red line as we go through these numbers. That is the seven-year average.
I'll let Jim talk about this.
Good evening. One of the processes that we do every year is right sizing to, right sizing to student numbers, our staffing to student ratios. And obviously, this year is no different. You passed a resolution last month telling us to look at, if there's any reductions in programs or staffing needed to be done, that's part of that process. So what has happened in the past several years, when growth has been regular and consistent, is the staffing was based upon the expected growth. And Julie was kind of spot-on with student numbers every year, and that worked out for several years. What's happened over the last year or so is that that hasn't been the case. Typically, in the past, that's one way to staff. The other way to staff, oftentimes in places where you have stagnant student growth or declining, is that you staff according to the actual kids that you have. So you don't project for fall, you go with what you got now. And so last year, we started that process of looking at that and estimating student numbers, particularly in the elementary, based, going by the class targets that we had by grade level. And that was all well and good, and then COVID hit, and a lot of students didn't show up to school. They took alternative routes of being at home or wherever. And at the same time, we increased three FTEs in order to be able to do elementary DLA. So that gives you an idea of what used to happen as far as staffing, or you staff to expected, to where we are, what we did last year, and what we'll do for this year, which is to staff to the student numbers that we have. What that normally means, then, is that you need to be able to hire as kids come in, as opposed to what you did before, which is the kids came and you staffed to it, and they showed up. And so a little bit different twist on how we're, how we're doing the staffing, more conservative approach, and I think we talked about that before once. So when you do that, and we look at numbers, just doing straight math here. So this is about taking student targets and figuring the number of staff that you would need. Based upon that, it would appear at this time, and we're not, we're not quite there yet to put a stamp of final on here, because a lot of things can change over the next several months. But I would say that that regular annual process of right sizing would be about 12 to, or 6 to 12 FTE adjustment downward. One of the things I wanted to do is just, I wanted to throw a sort of a graph in here to illustrate this. And so if you look at the numbers all the way back from 14, 15 up until now, you can see a very steady line. This is just an example of elementary, so this is K-FI staffing, and this is classroom averages in a regular elementary classroom, right? So if you look at this, pretty flat line, actually very flat line when you consider between there is, it's between '22 and '23 for an average class size. That's pretty darn flat. We made it this way to show what has happened the last year. That doesn't seem like much, but if you put it in the context that right now, we use 23.4 as the average classroom size target for any K-FI, so total, I want to say that right. So the average is 23.5 across the elementary. Obviously, kindergarten's going to be less, and 5th grade's going to be more, but 23.4, 23.4. So that doesn't seem like much, but if you look at that, a .1 increase or decrease in that average as a target is almost one FTE. So if you go 23.5, that'll be one less FTE. If you go 23.3, it's one more. Okay? It doesn't, it doesn't come out exactly. It's like for every .5, it's four FTE. But it's pretty close. And I only say that because I want you to understand what that, how that really changes when you change that class average just a little bit. But as Julie has shown before, she's been pretty spot-on throughout the last many years in the kids that were coming and the staffing. Because when you have a flat line like that between 20, 23-point-something, and man, that's, that's pretty spot-on. But there was obviously a change in the last year and a half. Does that all make sense? I don't know if I said that. Okay. So annual process, this would be the first step. It's obviously tied to the budget, too, because we're paying people. So if there's less people, there's less to pay out, so, okay?
I'm moving on to revenues and expenditures. These are the revenue assumptions that the board has approved, agreed that we would move forward with, zero on the basic formula for FY '22, and 1% in '23 and '24, and then moving to, back to the 2% in FY '25. Our continued special ed revenue increase of 4.5%. The one-time additional achievement and integration revenue, and then reinstate our lost revenue from gate receipts and parking fees. We do expect a reductions, continue to expect a reduction in title funds. We won't know what those numbers are until later in the spring. Our expenditures assumptions, again, reinstate our one-time reductions that we had from this year. We anticipate a 6.6 increase in health insurance, a transportation increase of 1%. Our utility costs have been averaging 5%, and property liability, workers' comp, is around 8%. We brought this forward as our enrollment projections for 188 students, what it would look like. It's hard to read this, but you can see we're moving from a, it's really much easier if I look at this, at the graph. If you look at the graph, the blue is our unassigned fund balance, and the orange is our assigned. But when we look at our total fund balance policy, we look at both the dark blue and the orange to determine what that is. So I've kept it separate in FY '21, or 2021. But you can see, as I move forward, it's combined, the blue and the orange is combined. It looks a little bit better than it did when I first brought this to you back in January, simply because our health insurance was a little bit higher, and we'd made some other adjustments as we've gone through this process. So you can see, and I still try to tell you not to look out too far. See, that looks really bad in 2026. But of course, a lot of things can happen in five years. And so I don't want you to get caught up in that. What I really want you to do is look at the next two years and say, what do we need to do to change this trajectory downward? This is our revenue pie chart. You can see the majority of our revenue comes from general education aid and special ed. Those are both state dollars that are coming to us. Our property taxes in the green is 17% of our funding. This year, our federal is 4%. That usually is about 1%. And the only reason it's higher at that 4% this year is because of the COVID funding that we've been receiving. That is federal funds. And then we do get some, you know, other state revenue just in different areas of categorical funding. And then our expenditure pie chart, as we know, the majority of our expenses, our salaries and benefits for our staff, purchase services. I talk about these simply because I don't want, it's, it's transportation. It's our, it's our substitutes. It's those kinds of things that we use for our students. And supplies and materials is a small portion. Our capital expenditures in purple, that's a little higher this year, too, as we've been finishing up some of our construction projects with long-term facility maintenance. So those, that's a little bit higher this year. But that is restricted revenue as well and expenditures. Our COVID funding, you can see what we've spent. We've talked about this quite a bit over the past year. Our new estimate is an allocation of $772,000. We still haven't received a whole lot of information on when we would get those funds. The legislature has, until the end of May, technically, to disperse them, or when the session is over. I'm not sure how, what happens if they go into special session, if that delays that, or if they have to make that decision by May. So I'm just not sure when we will see that funding coming to the district. This is our revenue comparison. We've shown this several times as well, just showing our property taxes and our, I really look at those two lines with the arrows on them to kind of show our general fund and our debt service fund, because they're the two biggest components of our property taxes, and they're about even, actually. And so even though our debt service is higher, because we are a growing district, our general fund is much lower than other districts. And so even together, we, it's about $400 per pupil unit less than other metro-area schools. Then our expenditure, again, we spend about $2,000 less per student than a seven-county metro area. Our operating referendum comparisons, again, we're still on the low end of that comparison. We're a little bit higher than our neighbors in Farmington, and Shakopee does not have one. However, if you move to the technology levy, they definitely have a technology levy that makes up for that, and then we do not have that, so. And neither does Farmington. So we are really definitely on the low end, and I believe that the state revenue comparison shows that, that even back in 2018-19, once we had passed the operating referendum, we had moved from, up from 260 to 241 out of 330 districts, and now we've slid back again, back to 256 in terms of revenue. As other districts have passed referendums and those kinds of things, they keep gaining on us again.
So as we look at some of those next steps in the budget planning, we're going to continue to look at all of the budget components, monitoring student enrollment as we go, certainly watching and paying close attention to the legislative updates to see what's happening there, and continuing to learn more, as Julie said, about that, the federal funding that is supposed to be coming our way, as well as the state funding. Thanks. The next slide, then, actually, let's keep it, actually, yeah, go back one, Julie. I was just in, perfect, thank you. So the proposal, as I said, and what we're seeking direction tonight on, is looking at, again, a two-year solution for that $4 million deficit, and taking a look at this year, looking at a $2.5 to $3 million budget adjustment, which then will bring that fund balance down to the lowest range of the, of the fund balance policy, at that 8% to 9%. So number one, want to be sure that's the direction of the board. Number two, want to be sure that as you look at our initial strategies around that budget adjustment, it's looking at, obviously, we don't have the money yet, but as we get those ESAR funds, you feeling comfortable with using those funds as part of that budget adjustment moving into next year, as well as continuing to study the staffing, right sizing that Jim talked to you about. And again, I know that's a big range right now. We'll know more as we work through the process, but want to be sure that you're comfortable with that. And then obviously, as we get into the next slide, we'll talk about the, the budget process, the adjustment process that we'll be using. So those are some areas, as you're thinking, that we're going to seek direction on. And then I'll go ahead and review the process that we are using right now and will continue to use. In November and December, I had individual meetings with all of our leaders. And really, at that time, I just wanted to have some conversations about, you know, areas that they thought we could be more efficient in, or areas that they thought that there were additional opportunities to gain revenue in as we move forward. And then ultimately, just some of those wondering and ideas about where we could possibly do some budget adjustments. So individually, confidential meetings, but it gave me a lot of perspective as I listened to them, as I listened to their questions, and some of their wonderings. So for me, that was some initial round of studying. And since then, what I've asked administrators to do, and they're doing right now, is working with their teams. So elementary folks have been working together to really talk about what, what ideas they have and to be bringing those forward. Operations is working as a team, but they cross over multiple other areas, so they're also working with people. So right now, that's what's been happening. Obviously, after tonight, when we're sharing more than we knew, because although everybody is knowing that we needed to do some budget adjustments, until tonight, nobody's knowing what that amount is and what that looks like over the course of a couple of years. So tomorrow, we'll be prepared to send communication to our staff with more of these details, and with the process in which we're going to use, so that they are engaged. So we'll have staff meetings, leaders will hold staff meetings, communication will go out tomorrow. And then between Wednesday and Friday, I've asked leaders to have staff meetings, where they will share abbreviated version of this presentation. But we'll probably have the whole presentation there as a reference point for staff. I think it's really important that staff see and know all of this. And then from there, we have a Google form that they will have an opportunity to give us ideas, you know, really looking at what are some of those areas that they also think in terms of budget adjustments, potentially additional revenue, and just some of those ideas. And what we're going to do, we did all of that last year, and that all came in, you know, to me in a spreadsheet. And what we're going to do this year is we're adding a step. We're going to have that first round of data will be segregated by building, or in some cases, department, and in some cases, just the DSC. So then what will happen is principals will meet with their BILTS, department leads that have team leads will meet with them, and then DSC staff will meet with their staff here. And what they'll do is they'll take a look at, if I'm Patrick, who's sitting there, hi Patrick Glenn. If I'm Patrick, I'm going to get all of that data that comes from Jeffers Pond. So Patrick and his BILTS will look at all of that data. They'll have conversations about impact. They'll have conversations about the themes that they've seen. They'll have conversations about, you know, why these are some good ideas, why they aren't some good ideas. And they'll kind of go through a prioritization based on what their colleagues have said. And that will be that next layer of data that then comes forward. Jim Delba will do that with his team, and each of the departments at the DSC will also do that. The difference being, you know, Patrick's got a larger staff, so his staff will be able to identify as Jeffers Pond staff. We won't have the HR department, which is five people, identify themselves as HR. They'll identify themselves as the DSC. So that, Jim will see all of that, the DSC data, but he'll really focus with his team on those things around his areas of responsibility. So then, once that data comes in, again, we'll take a look at it as an admin team, and then that's when we'll really continue to work through the process of prioritizing and determining, as we look at targets in different areas, what are the wisest recommendations we can bring forward to you based on our mission and based on the guiding principles coming forward. So you can see some approximate dates there. I'm hoping then to be able to come back to you on the 8th with an update. We won't know a lot at that point, because our teams will be in the middle, but we will, I will, we would have gathered some data, so I can potentially share, start sharing some theme areas and potentially some targets with you. We'll keep working through that, and then on March 22nd, it's our hope that we can bring forward recommendations to the board. Again, seek directions, our direction on that, and then look for approval on April 12th. So with that, Jim, if you'd go back one slide, actually, why don't we go ahead? We'll go ahead and finish. There's just a couple more slides, and then we can go back and you can provide direction and ask questions. The next slide talks about the guiding principles that we'll be using through the process, and obviously, our staff will be seeing that as well. You know, it's always that balance between our educational needs and ensuring fiscal responsibility. Want to be sure that everything is dependent and focused on student achievement and our strategic plan, ensuring successful learner and safety of our students, keeping in mind the whole child as our strategic plan pulls out, pulls out or talks about. We'll continue to have transparency and discussions, and what's really hard about that is that we know, as we just saw in Julie's slides, that 80% of our budget is people, so we'll be talking about people. And that always gets difficult, but that we can't shy away from those conversations if we're going to make the, the most wise decisions we can. Again, looking for that balanced budget, not for next year, but the following year, maximizing whatever resources we have, maintaining that fund balance as were required by policy to do, aligning all of our resources of time and talent and funds to achieve those strategic priorities, and then continuing to analyze our future healthcare, insurance, and then moving into different contractual obligations that we have. As we're planning, there's also a couple other things that are on our radar that we're paying attention to, and some of these will have costs associated with them. We're continuing to move forward with our application to be an online learning program. Again, one of the conversations in the legislature and with MDE, and actually, MDE said that they would be getting some information to superintendents this week, is about whether or not we'll have the flexibility to provide distance learning, should our, our students and our families choose that, without being an MDE online provider. So we're hoping to get more additional information around that. We're also, as you know, working on the MinCap's Trades Pathway, which we're thrilled about. We'll be taking a look at the work of our MTSS planning team and what that means in terms of impacting, first of all, supports to students and then budget. And then obviously, the ongoing conversation with the board will be about a future technology or operating levy, if you so chose that as well. Again, not for spring, but that ongoing conversation as we look for strategies moving forward. And then lastly, we're back to that outcome, and I think the next slide just talks about those key messages again. So with that, Jim, I'll ask you to go back to the place where we want to get some direction from the board around that reduction amount. Around that reduction amount, what it means to the fund balance. The strategies of the Esser funds as well as right sizing and then the process. And with that, I'd open it up, Chair Well, to questions as we seek direction, as we can continue to plan.
Okay, a lot of information to take in. I know a lot of board members have been looking at this over the weekend and things like that. So with that, I guess I just open it up, if anyone has any questions and wants to start us off.
You can, I can start. So here we are again, I mean, it's a budget thing and it's not, it's not the brightest picture. I guess I think I would, I would maybe add in terms of just the guiding principles, I think it's just a given. That we do our best to minimize the impact in the classroom and the impact to our students. We have a fund balance policy. In the rest of the world, the phrase fund balance is known as reserves or your rainy day funds. And while I can't say I'm thrilled with going to the, as close to that 8% number as we'll go. The reason you have a rainy day fund, I don't know that there's going to be another one that's caused by a pandemic. So I mean, it's just, it's, if there's a reason to dip that deeply, this is the time to dip that deeply. I do think we want to be mindful to not have that happen in a way that could impact our credit rating. Because one of the ways that we are also going to be able to save some money. Is hopefully, again, being able to refine it, some debt along the way. So I do want to be mindful of where that number goes and make sure it doesn't have an impact. I do have a question, anybody can, either Julie or Terry, you might know. But with the CARES funds last year, we had a lot of restrictions on those. We are confident with the Esser funds that we're going to have a little more flexibility if and when they show up to use those in this fashion. Because we are looking at that as helping to balance an operating budget. And if we had tried to do that with the CARES funding last year, we would not have been able to.
That's our understanding at this point with all of the guidance that we've been given. Julie, anything?
Okay, and I get it, it's guidance. And until it's a real thing, it's hard to know for sure. I guess my last point is I do like hearing that we are already starting what I would call a bottom-up process. In terms of starting within the buildings and the BILTS teams. I do think we should be also thinking of, are there any significant changes? Any significant systemic things that can be done? I just, I'm not, I'm not suggesting this, it's just an idea. Or it's just sort of for illustrative purposes, but we have, you know, multiple different platforms that we use. We discussed this this morning at different, at the elementary level with CSO and with Schoology and all the other systems that are in place. And I just, I wonder if we should be looking at some of those things, are there some redundancies, is there some overlap? We're going to need to find lots of small ways to save dollars. If there are some bigger ways that would obviously be helpful. And so that's my reaction, not, it's hard to talk about going that low a fund balance for me. But I do think this is an appropriate time to do that.
Thanks, Jonathan, I just wanted to, I saw the look of Mr. Malazo in the back. And I know that as we look at software, you know, that is, that is something that we spend a fair amount of money on. And there's a purpose for everything that we do. But I know that he and his team and his work with his team and with principals will be to really analyze that. And to your point, are there redundancies, are there changes that we can make? And what's the impact financially? And what's that impact in terms of workload for staff and change for staff? So, but thank you.
Hello Enrique. We're just in discussion phase, so. I won't call on you. That'd be mean. Anyone else have questions, any other questions? Michael.
I'll just add a comment too, to follow up on Jonathan. I like looking at it as two years and seeing how we can deal with that $4 million within that two-year framework. I agree with the fund balance. And having said that, if we're looking at a difference between the two and a half and three, is that what we're looking at right now? I'm trying to reach from there, two and a half to three for this year. I think keeping an eye on that fund balance and then seeing if, whatever we can do on the lower end of that for this first chunk makes me comfortable. I'll return again to the comments of the auditor who went through our entire financial picture a few months ago and presented to us. And cautioned us as a board as we look forward to try and just really focus on what you have to do the next year or two in light of these unusual circumstances. And that might involve things like looking at your fund balance. So I think we've gotten some good advice that way too. And I am appreciative of the extra step that you've added in there for collecting feedback from the ground up to go to that BILTS team. To filter things and to not just have a slew of comments coming at you or us. I think is going to be a huge benefit this year, elevate those voices and organize that, so thank you.
Yeah, Mary, go ahead. You know, some members of the board remember last year. And as Michael just affectionately referred to. There's a couple of things that concern me. One is I want to, you know, when we're comparing our district to other districts. The difference is mostly compensatory. And then again, the tech levy is something that our district has opted voluntarily not to go out for. So while I understand we don't have it, that was also our choice. Now, last year, we also ran into the situation where we didn't really have a good fund balance even before the pandemic. And did reduce and resize classrooms. Then we went through the pandemic and of course, had close to, you know, a lot of money coming in from the state to help out. But it didn't help with our current situation. So that's understandable coming into this. The other thing is that, you know, we're talking, you know, Jonathan brought up a good point about the, you know, not wanting to decrease the fund balance. Now, we, you know, like I said, the fund balance issue has been an ongoing issue, not just during the pandemic. It's been slowly decreasing even up to the pandemic. So I remember the conversations going, well, you know, we're going to, you know, lay off or, or, you know, furlough so many. And the comments where we don't really have a fund balance to pull from unless we go below our minimum. So my concern is that the, first of all, even if we do dip into the fund balance. The bond ROI was $800,000 over four years. So that is not an equal ROI to what we would have to dip into. Also, last time, we took the majority, if not all, the cuts out of our frontline staff to our teachers. And did not do administration. And I think we do have some opportunities this time to balance that out with cuts from administration. We also have some opportunities for some voluntary attrition that we could take advantage of in order to soften the blow. And hopefully, the blow is short-lived, hopefully. I mean, hopefully, things will get back. And I am hoping that we do choose to get certified as a distance learner. Because I think other districts around us have that opportunity and I think that will help us keep more students in. And I do understand why the MDE requires certain types of certifications and curriculum for the distance learner because of the standards. So if you go to an online school, they have standards and that's what they want to make sure that everyone sits with, so I get that. So I've got some concerns about the direction this is going. And I think that there's other opportunities we can take advantage of right now in order to soften the blow. We are going to be dealing with kids that have been distance learning, particularly our most vulnerable, which are elementary. We are looking at, you know, adjustment periods, we're looking at increased stresses on our frontline workers. I'm also worried about the circuitous effect of cutting at some of our most vulnerable areas. And seeing potentially our district rating drop even further or our test scores go down. And we, you know, we pride ourselves on attracting people into this district because we've got a good school district. I'd like to keep those numbers up. So I'd like to take a closer look at taking some short-term pains for long-term goals. I would like to take a closer look at administrative cuts. I would like to really, and especially this time, put the focus on the impact to educational outcomes. All right, and realizing that we still only have one reading interventionist per elementary school and only through the second grade. And I have a feeling that if we, you know, continue to size out our elementary classrooms. And inherit some of the potential issues that occurred because of the pandemic. That we're actually going to be moving backwards in educational outcomes and not forward. And that's going to have a longer-term negative effect on our entire district. Than making some short-term cuts at some of our most vulnerable times.
Could I please? I just want to clarify, our fund balance two years ago was over 14%. And so it has not been dropping except for this last year and of course, this year. And so I just want to make sure that we're clarifying that we were over 14% just two short years ago. And just to say that it doesn't take much to drop to where we're at today. And so making sure that we have a positive fund balance is really important for school districts for a lot of reasons. Such as a pandemic like this. But it hasn't been dropping for years and years, it's actually been growing until just two years ago.
Well, before, when we went into this, I want to make this clear, when we went into the same discussion last year this time. We were looking at the minimum fund balance, so it must have dropped pretty darn quickly. But my record said two years ago, we were at 12% and three years ago, we were at 14%, so I may be wrong.
This last year, we were anticipating a larger drop than we actually had simply because of the pandemic. We did not lose the fund balance that we had expected. Simply because we had so much savings at the end of the year due to the pandemic. And you saw a lot of school districts around us had some savings as well. Of course, many school districts are now seeing double the drop that they expected for this year simply because of the loss of students. When you lose that many students throughout, it's really difficult for any school district to sustain any kind of positive fund balance. So you're seeing that across the state. Our people are, our districts are making cuts unless they really had a really healthy fund balance. And then they don't, they're utilizing that instead of making cuts.
But okay.
Thanks Julie, Jim, were you going to?
Well, I just wanted to clarify about last year. When we talked, we, there were reductions. All of those reductions, there was not a change in class size. So the class size targets remain the same. So when, when we talk about cuts, you gotta, to me, there's two processes. There's a reduction based upon the number of kids you have. And then there's doing something in order to raise class size so you can gain additional reduction amount. That's what we did last year.
You're saying we right-sized last year?
We right-sized last year.
So there was no change in?
Correct.
Right, in?
Class size, basically, because we were right sizing based on enrollment.
And we also did, you know, a lot of those decisions that we made last year, Mary, did you have another question?
No, I think one of my questions is, is we had a long discussion about, you know, the, going back to the original class size averages. And that was a discussion, it was a point. And I remember, and I actually looked at those board records before coming to this meeting because I want to know what the difference was. And we did go through several discussions about bringing the class size averages. I can't remember what the term was, but it wasn't right sizing, it was like bringing it up to, you know, the averages that maybe the. We always try to beat the average, but we moved it back up. And I think that, you know, when you're talking about the average, and I remember seeing this at the, at the other grade levels. And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, I'm just trying to say that, you know, basically, no matter what, particularly at the elementary level. And particularly now, I am deeply concerned about not only additional stressors on teachers. But also having equal or larger class sizes given the stress and the impact on educational outcomes. And I think we need to understand that, you know, maybe we need to give a little bit more to get, to get us back. To get everyone back at least to where we can start to continue to improve. And that's my major, that's my concern, my concern is on educational outcomes for our kids and what's going to happen.
That's all our concerns. Jim, will you show the slide that you had? Mary, I can't remember if you were here for this part of the presentation. But when Jim talked about the right sizing of the staff, he added today, so it wasn't in the, it wasn't in the packet that you all received on Thursday. But he added a graph to show that the class size over the last many years has remained stable. And last year, we actually, or this current year, we actually dipped and have lower class sizes.
So I want to make, you know, when you talk about averages, you say the average is 23. Does that mean that we can have kids, we can have some classes at 10 or 15 and some classes up to 30 or more?
Yeah, we spend a lot of time with the elementary principals sitting down and trying to equalize those out as much as we possibly can. We have grade level targets for each grade level, starting with kindergarten and then getting larger. So we keep our eye on that the entire time. And then when we sit down and talk about open enrollees or in-district transfers. They spend a lot of time sitting down with the Mars Coordinator, trying to figure out where to place kids to. Try to make it as much like sardines as you can to get all of those as equaled out as possible. And if that doesn't happen, we have discussions about if an FTE, because of small class sizes somewhere, should be moved somewhere else to alleviate it. Along with that, we talk about multiple factors related to those, the kids in those grades in those buildings. So we look at how many kids were, are in special ed that are in a self-contained classroom. How many kids are in intervention, how many kids are in title. All those yabbits that I often hear from principals when we're talking and they say, yeah, but you don't understand in this grade. So we get to that granular, granular level of talking about that. And trying to right-size them as equal as we can across the district.
And one of the things that I'd like to make sure we get on record is when we're talking about the averages. We're not talking about a special ed class that's got 10 or 15 kids in it averaged with a regular class.
When we talk about elementary classrooms, we're only talking about the regular elementary classroom teachers. We're not talking about all the rest of the FTEs, we're not including other licensed staff in that calculation. It is only the elementary classroom teachers.
That's a number, then that's a number.
Anyone else, Amy, Julie, questions?
Nope. I don't really have any questions, but I just wanted to say I do, you know, in the interest of moving forward and kind of piggybacking on what you all have said. I do think class size is really important, I think everyone in this room does. You know, that's where the kids, what's best for kids is to really try and work around those targets. And secondly, I just want to say a really big thank you to all the staff that's going to have to work together and collaborate. To get really smart about making these decisions. I love that it's from the bottom up, I think that's really, really important. And, you know, it's, it's a tough thing that when you're in your hardest year of teaching probably, that then we're asking you to do this. So I just really want to say thank you to the staff, to the teachers, to administrators, to everybody involved. Because I think as a community member and representing community members, I know we all feel that way.
Enrique, did you have any questions?
No, it looks like you hit on quite a few of the different areas that I was concerned with. Um, just making sure that strategically, we are evaluating both of those aspects. Strategic direction and what do any potential, um, workforce reductions look like when we try to align them to the strategic directions? Do we need to re-contract them or re-contract the strategic directions and initiatives? Or just make sure that we're very intentional about how we move forward and how the staff look at that. Um, but with that bottom-up approach, I would anticipate that, yeah, you have the right people, you have the right mindset and, uh, the right decisions will come out of it.
Okay. Thank you. I have, do have a couple of questions. Um, you all answered, asked a lot of my questions that I was already talking about. But, um, Jim, this may be for you. Um, contractually, given the timeline with reductions, does that work? I know that sometimes we're up to dates as to far, as far as when we're talking about letting staff go, that there is dates.
Yeah. Traditionally, it would be the April board meeting, excuse me, the April board meeting, when you would take action on any non-renews, ULAs, any kind of personnel action. Um, that gives plenty of time for all the statutory, um, deadlines that happen by the end of the contract.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then as far as, um, I really like hearing about the process, um, involved. I know, you know, um, last time that we went through this, there was, you know, some concern about feedback and that kind of thing in the process. So I just want to reiterate then if I'm a staff member and I'm listening to this or I'm going to hear, so I'll be, there'll be an, information going out tomorrow or in the next day or two as to what I can do and be a part of this.
Yeah, there'll be a, the email that's going out tomorrow is just kind of a recap, excuse me, of this. And then what I've asked, um, I've asked leaders to, uh, have a staff meeting sometime after our administrative meeting on Wednesday and before Friday. So all staff will be a part of a meeting. And what we'll do is like with our, um, we'll ask our Child Nutrition Service staff and operations staff to join a staff meeting in the building.
In their building.
Yeah. And then we'll, um, so they'll, they'll have an opportunity to hear more information and a presentation as well as then, uh, leaders will send the link to that original survey after that with some guidance around that. And then that will be open, I think till, uh, noon on March 4th, if I recall correctly. By the end of the day on March 4th, then we'll desegregate that data back to all leaders. And then we've kind of got a tight timeline and I sent a notice to leaders today so that they know to call a Bilt meeting, a team leader meeting, or a department, depending on where they're from, either on March 5th, March 8th, or March 9th. And then that gets us another round of data for our admin meeting on March 10th, where then we'll just continue to work through the processes as we look at what staff have said, um, look at impact and prioritize. And, and that's what's hard, you know, I mean, we're all, we all care about the outcomes of our students. We all care about, um, you know, every single part of what we do around student achievement and student development. Um, and we're lean, uh, no matter how you share those comparisons. Um, as Julie points out, both the, the revenue and expenditure piece, we are a lean organization. And we're just going to have to work really well and collaboratively and try to figure out what are those things. Everything's going to have an impact. And I think that's very important for everyone to know. Everything is going to have an impact and it's just really understanding that impact and, um, what is less hard to live without than something else.
Um, thank you. And then, um, the, um, fund balance. Um, yeah, I'll just, I got one more question, then I'll get you. Uh, fund balance, uh, Julie, um, 8%. Can you give me an idea of how long that will pay the bills, basically? Is that a month, six weeks? Month?
Thirty-one days.
Thirty-one days. Okay. So, um, yeah, well, I know when I first joined the board, um, we were coming out of statutory operating debt. And, um, we're just experiencing a positive cash flow for the first, you know, for the first time. Um, and I've slowly built that up over the years. Um, and I know that, that impact in one year can be, you know, between, you know, a low funding year and then a reduction in enrollment of what was planned, um, can be significant. So, uh, you know, I, I feel personally, um, you know, 8% is low. I mean, I was part of the fund balance policy when we talked about this. Um, but I do feel that hopefully that this is a one-time type deal with the pandemic, um, and going that low. Um, but knowing that we will not have to borrow any money if we go to that.
That was a good question.
Yeah.
That I really don't know. If, if everything stays as it is, most likely we would not. But if we do get shifted, that changes my answer.
Well, that might change my answer too then. Um, because if we have a shift on top of an 8% reduction and then we're going into borrowing dollars and having to pay interest, that could change my answer. And we won't know that until the legislature's done, which is just wonderful timing for all of us.
And that's why it's really frustrating to try and,
Wham.
Yes, thank you. There's a good plan because there's so many unknowns and that's, that's the hard part, you know? If we get a 1% increase, I've, I've heard a lot of things, I mean, and how much of it is true? And, you know, you're hearing, well, he, they may, we may get a 1% increase.
And then they're going to shift.
But they shift us 70, 30, you know, I've heard that. But I, you know, I, I don't know what will happen at the end of the day. And the same with the CARES funding, you know, we're sitting here waiting, waiting and we don't have a clear plan. You know, they're, they want us to use CARES funding for summer school. But if you're not giving school districts an ample amount of time to plan for summer school, if you're not letting us know until May 21st, that's really frustrating for schools as well. I mean, yes, we can make plans and we can, but to not know you're getting that funding, you know, that makes a huge impact on what kind of planning and what kind of summer school you can offer. And so those are, I think for every school district, every school business official, every superintendent in the state of Minnesota that's waiting patiently for this information. And then you're trying to say, well, what, what's that best guess or what's that best scenario that you can come up with? That's very difficult to do. And so, you know, I think we're all planning and hoping for the best, but I, you know, I don't have that crystal ball. I don't have that answer for the board or anybody to say, this is what I think the legislature is going to do.
Julie, just for, for folks that might be listening, will you talk a little bit more about what that, the shift?
What it means, like?
Yeah.
Well, the shift, right now, school districts get 90% of their funding in the first year and then 10% kind of as a cleanup at, in the next year. So it's really looking at enrollment on October 1, school districts get paid, that a 90% of their funding based on that October 1 enrollment. It's metered out throughout the year. And we, when we get tax payments, we don't get any state aid payments and those kinds of things. It's kind of this metering system that they've created. And so we get 90% of that funding metered to us different times of the year. And then 10% is a cleanup payment. So like us, if our enrollment declines throughout the year, we may get a little bit more money. We're probably getting more than 90%, but we get less in that 10. If they shift funding, what they do is they say, well, now we're only going to pay you 70% in year one and 30% in year two. So that the state has, they're, because they're on a cash basis, their cash looks better. Even though they owe us 30% of those funds, their cash basis looks better for them at the end of the year.
And they balance their budget.
And they balance their budget.
Based on that.
So they're balancing their budget on school district and paying school districts. And it only works for them for one year. Because the next year, so then one year goes from 90 to 70, they save that 20% in one year. And then the next year, they either have to shift us some more so they can balance again, or they have the funding or they're doing something or making adjustments to their budget as well. So that's how that funding.
And in the early years, when I was first on the board, we were having, experiencing that and getting zeros. And so at that time, we had assigned some dollars in, how we can assign, specifically for not having to borrow. So, so that we would have that, so that she would have that flexibility in case we had to dip into that. That, that's my concern with this, is going down to 8%. Um, and then if we possibly get something like that happening, that we're going to be forced to borrow. Um, that's just, in my opinion, spending money, you know, but you're paying interest for.
And it, right. It is exactly what we try not to do.
Right.
And so we work really hard at that to make sure that we have the funding. However, districts do make those decisions and they, and sometimes it's unavoidable. If they shift you so much that you just can't, don't have the cash and depending on how it's metered out, there may be some months that you just can't. And I think we looked at that several years ago when we were getting zero and shifted 60, 40. You know, there were a couple of months that we said, well, maybe we just need a couple of months of, instead of a whole year. So that was, and we'll look at that again too, as we go through this process and see what the results are from the legislature. But I can't give you solid answers without knowing what I'm dealing with here with the legislature.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then I just had one other comment, um, just as far as cuts, um, or reductions from last year. Um, and I know Dr. Stahl, I've talked individually about this, um, before this, is I do feel, um, you know, we kind of left off and where we need to start is that administration. Um, because that was a spot, I know we run lean and low in that area, but I think we may have to make sure that it's felt across the entire organization. Um, and so, in my opinion, that's probably where we start. Um, so I know Julie had a comment or two here.
Oh, yeah. And Julie just sat down.
I know, sorry.
Sorry, Julie. That's actually Stacy's fault.
I know. Well, I, I, I'm trying, I'm just giving people that. Yeah, that's fine. It's fine.
I agree with very, a lot of what everybody has said here. Um, one thing that stood out to me is, yes, there's so many unknowns, right? But you still have to deal with what is ahead. So, you know, fail to plan, plan to fail, right? Um, I applaud all the hard work in the administration and teachers, just like everybody else here does. Um, I think that one other thing that, that I'd like you to explain, because we're talking about the public is listening and the public always raises their ears when we talk cuts and budgets. If you could explain, we spend a lot of time talking about, and I agree with Mary, I've spent many years comparing districts to districts. Um, compensatory funding and all that, it's impossible. I would like you to explain, just in layman's terms, kind of this tech levy that you discuss. I mean, we, we all kind of know what it is. Um, we know that there are good times to go out for those things and there's bad times to go out for those things. But if you could kind of give me your overview of hypothetically, had we had a tech levy in place, where would we be? Or, because I know a lot of this is like, well, we have these ideas ahead. Um, we can't say that it's going to pass if we ever went out for one. But what does that do with our money that you see? I've heard is it like 3 million, 2 to 3 million a year?
You can pick a number, basically. I mean, Julie would, I mean, yes.
I, and I can't, you know, I can't really say how it's going to affect our budget because we, it really depends on what amount you go out for.
Yeah.
A tech levy is also called a capital projects levy. That's one in the same. It's the ability to go out and, and levy for one specific item, such as technology, which is a lot of school districts do. And then, you know, you receive those funds and you can use them for that, for that reason. That, um, that amount changes every year depending on what that enrollment is. So, um, you know, there's pluses and minuses to each a tech levy and, or an operating referendum. They're, you know, can be utilized very similarly. It's just that one is one for a specific reason. So it's kind of an interchangeable, you know, on operating, it can be used for a lot more things than a tech levy or a capital projects levy. You know, people have done capital projects levy for things other than technology if they wanted, but it's.
But you kind of name that when you're going out, what you're putting, you know.
And a lot of districts just are, it, it has really just become a technology levy.
Yeah.
Which is why it's called a tech levy, even though in technical terms, since a capital projects levy, if you saw that on your levy certification, it'd be called capital projects levy. It wouldn't be called a technology levy because there's more in the,
Language.
In the legi- in the legislation of that than just technology.
And then Julie, what ultimately happens, if you've got a designated fund for technology, then the, that amount of dollars that's currently being used in the general fund to fund technology can be used for other things.
But we do just correct, we, we, we set what we want it to be used for, right?
Correct. I mean, you come out and you say what it is. Yes, the intention of it and, you know, yeah.
And, and could I just ask a question, just based upon what Julie said? And I, I hope you don't mind.
No, I'm sure it's probably in my.
How much do we actually spend on basic devices for kids and stuff like that? I mean, is, is that a, just a ra- I'm not asking for an exact.
Don't have a number off the top of my head. I just don't have that number in my head. I'm sorry.
But that amount comes out of the general fund, right?
All of it comes from the general fund, absolutely every bit of it. And it's, it's all the leasing that we do for our, our devices. It's the staffing for our devices. It's the software. It's the repairs. Um, am I missing anything? Okay. So all of that is in that technology budget. What, what the issue is for our school district, and we were able to utilize some of our, because we're now one-to-one, which really wasn't on a, on our radar, on the district's radar, we're now a one-to-one district. We don't have the capacity for that in our budget, the way it stands right now. And so therefore that funding has to come from somewhere. I mean, we're a one-to-one K8 and a two-to-one in grades one cave. Well, I said the other way around. We're a one-to-one in eighth through 12. A two-to-one in the,
K through seven.
K8, K7 really. But that's what we have a budget for and is now a one-to-one. So we've utilized, because some of the CARES funding and those types of things to get us, so we have devices that students can utilize and they work, because we had that issue for a while as well. And hotspots and all of those things so that students are able to learn in their environment at home or hybrid learning or whatever it may be.
But it's one-time money.
But it's one-time funds. And the same with the funding that we're getting now, the 772, those are one-time funds. And even though we can use them to supplant, they are simply one-time funds. So next year, we would need to find funding for that as well to offset that.
And Jonathan, I know, but Julie, did you have more questions?
Um, no, just, it was just along those lines of, you know, at this point in time, obviously Jonathan even mentioned, like, look at what our technology, what our, what our little, our programming costs us. All that adds up. But I think it's important for the community to understand, we did accelerate and have to spend a lot of funds on that, which is great. But it's also an expectation in our community. And when I think about educational outcomes, I don't think there's a parent in this district that hasn't probably had to go run out and buy something quickly to help their student learn. And, um, I feel like that was part of why we are at where we're at as well. I mean, I'm obviously new to this, but, um, if you just look at that whole picture. And I also, just one more thing I wanted to add, I don't think we've lost students to other districts, to my knowledge, that I've heard a lot of. So when I spend time comparing us to like Shakopee and Burnsville and all that, I mean, we all get, we all, they're all exchanging, right?
We're all in the same boat.
We're all in the same boat.
Yeah.
So that just hits something that popped into my head. And I, I think so much of this is solved with students, right? Not solved, but improved with students. And in the business world, when times get tough, everybody says that if, you know, the, the typical business, the first thing they cut is the ad budget, when what they should be doing is doubling the ad budget. And there is a part of me that says, would it be a sound, modest investment for us to find some way to reach back out to the families in this community and tell them, hey, we miss you and we really hope that you'll come back? Um, and, and have a message, um, because that's it. It's, it's students and we, we want those folks back. And we, I think we need to make them know that we want them back. And I think we have a great product. We have a great product to sell. Um, and so I just, to me, that's one thing that shouldn't be overlooked, is working to get our students back.
And one of the things that I think is, yes, and another thing that I believe is going to really help that is as we plan for the return of all secondary students to in-person, I think people who are I think people who are wondering what's going to happen next year are hopefully going to be hearing the voices of our kids and seeing kindergarten, open house in person, and those things that help them see that, yep, we are going to get out of this and have our kids back next year. But yeah, you know, and part of it is, you know, there are some legal things that we're unable to do, to reach out to some of those families. But I think you're right, making sure that, you know, come, enroll, come back.
Showcase.
Yeah.
I have one additional question. You know, we, we kind of talked about the FTEs that we're not going to fill. What was the net from that, at least estimate into here? And I, and I understand that, you know, there was a spreadsheet or something like that created, are those FTEs already? That, that are open positions that we said, okay, we're not going to go ahead and fill this year?
Those are back in the budget.
Those are back in the budget, okay.
And that was part of the assumptions, that that went back into the budget.
Okay. You know, and then also plugging in, thank you so much, Julie, for bringing it up the way you did. You know, last year when we did this, we talked about part of the staff cuts being not only support staff for those students that I already mentioned, we were so desperate for, but also our tech support, which we're under, compared to other districts, we have less per, you know, per staff than, than other districts do. Is that something that we, that is also on the chopping block here today? Because obviously with the
We're just starting the process.
Okay.
We're just starting the process.
I mean, my opinion is you start from scratch. So, I mean, in my opinion, that's everything.
Okay, so, we're not gonna?
I think it's everything. Everything will get looked at again, everything was put back in, that was, you know, people have left and things like that, and it's time to start over. And so, with that in mind, I just want to call to the budget timeline to make sure the board is clear on that. And what Dr. Stallow said, as far as it's, you know, fairly tight, but I think it's, there is time for good, authentic feedback from staff. And so, that March eighth board meeting will just be an update at that point. They're kind of in the middle of doing it with the built teams, which is the new step, I think, this year that you're a reference to. And really giving those team leads and department heads and built teams a chance to review what's coming in from the staff and take it to that level. And then, we'll just get an update. And then, really, the twenty-second is where we'll see more of, in detail, what, what those are, and the plan that in April we'll, we'll approve. So, just so everyone has that. I just want to clarify to what they're seeking direction for. I heard it from a couple of people, but I didn't hear it from everyone. Just as far as what you're comfortable with, what they should be looking at, is it a two-point-five, is it a three million? Is it going to eight percent? Is it going, you're not comfortable at eight percent, or you're going, you know? So, I think I heard from a couple, two-point-five, eight percent. Is that where, where are we at with people?
I'm comfortable with that, but I think Stacy, you asked a great question about the shift, and that's, I know that's like trying to predict the impossible.
I asked the question, knew, I kind of knew what the answer was going to be, and unfortunately, the timing is crap. That's thanks to our legislature, who doesn't seem to ever meet a deadline. So, we're probably not going to get an answer to that question, and so, it is a gamble.
But we might get smarter about it.
Well, I know, it'll be a month later. I mean, we may, we'll, you know, time will go, and we'll figure out. But I would say to this, as elected officials, this is certainly a time to light up our friends up at the legislature. So, feel free to do some emailing.
Yes.
Another revenue projection this week for the state, I mean, all those things are in flux.
Right. So, I, you know, I think we're doing the best that we can with what we know now, you know. But, yeah, there's always going to be tweaks. But I think at this point, two and a half and eight percent is what we're, is that kind of a consensus from people?
I think so.
So, heads nod, okay? Head nods, okay.
I, I think, you know, again, we're, we're dealing with an unknown, and I'd like to go with them, obviously, the less which possible, the minimum possible budget cut as, as we can.
Right.
And knowing that if the numbers do pick up, we're going to be hiring again, probably in August, if those numbers come in. And, and that knee-jerk thing is, is a huge hit to the morale of our staff, too. And we want to try to avoid that as much as possible, cut, and then, okay, we rehire.
Right. I get, I mean, I get that. I mean, and then, then, but we also don't know how many kids are going to, you know what I mean, like, I, yeah.
Yeah, there is some, there are some unknowns, but I want to make it clear that we, we should go as, as positive as possible.
And the eight percent is using up as much of our reserves as we fund policy can, and it's the lowest reduction.
And I'm very concerned about morale, and I'm also very concerned about the correct rating.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, that's, it's, it is a hard balance. It's a hard balance. There are people involved, and there are also lots of dollars involved.
And so, what I would ask of the board is if you, you know, specifically with these questions, let's get them to Dr. Stallow or the executive group. So, you know, like, what is going to be our, if there's, you know, like, if you have these questions, get them so that we can get as much information as we can for the presentations coming forward.
Chair, I would like one other clarification, because I want to be sure that everyone here understands it. And if we need Jim back up here, we can. But in terms of the right sizing, that is an annual process. I know it's on a slide that we talk about budget adjustments. But that is not a budget reduction. It is a right sizing that we annually do. And I want to be sure that everybody here understands that and understands the way Jim talked about, that last year and this year, we're doing things differently in order to make sure that the kids are here. So, that FTE that you saw, I just want to be sure that you feel really confident speaking to that, because there's no way to not mingle those messages. But I know that I will say over and over in this process, every chance I have is that annually, we do a right sizing. And up until last year, we had been adding staff because we were adding students. Last year, when we right-sized, we didn't get the students, so we had to reduce staff. That was before even that budget adjustment piece. So, I just, just want to be sure, if you have any questions on that, Jim speaks to it again. But I want to be sure that, that we speak to that, and I'll ask leaders to also speak with, with staff so that they understand that.
So, that's, it's happening alongside, but not, I mean, it's obviously funds, but it's, it would be happening.
It would be hap- correct.
Reduction, yeah. If we had a negative fund out.
Surplus.
Yes.
Okay, I think we have direction.
All right.
Thank you very much. Julie and Jim, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I, I just think real quick, maybe also there is, I think there is generally, we said it, consensus also that we are kind of starting where we ended last time, and important that we're talking about
Administration.
Administration as well.
That was the theme, definitely.
And I do just want to say, because it was said as we talked about teaching staff, and I couldn't agree more, this is the hardest year that teaching staff have had. This is the hardest year administrators have also had. So, I, I understand, I understand my direction very, very well. And this just stinks that we're in this position, because we've had thirteen hundred employees that have done unbelievably miraculous work.
Yep.
And with those thirteen hundred employees, there have been administrators and teachers and support staff who have been working around the clock. And I want to say that, I know of my team, since March fifteenth, when we were in this room on a Sunday, maybe it was the sixteenth, they have been working around the clock. So, I have my direction, but I also want to say that.
I think we would all echo that.
I know. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our board policy review. Mr. Holmberg, I think we start with five oh five. So, this is the first go-over on these.
Good evening, Chair Ruhwell, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. Actually, they're kind of grouped accordingly, so five oh five is student enrollment requirements, and then five oh nine is enrollment of non-resident students. There are no revisions to note on either of these coming before you. I do want to offer kudos to Julie Sink and her office in enrollment. They're the ones that put this policy to practice for reviewing the information that parents need when they enroll their students. So, I just want to highlight both of those at this time.
So, you're taking, are you just taking five oh five and five oh nine together?
It's kind of a, well.
It's a group.
I didn't want to say the same thing twice.
Right, right, I got you. So, anybody have any questions on those policies?
I think there's any significant changes, were there, Jeff?
No.
No, I didn't think so. It's just a renewal.
It's a date change, that's basically it.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, five twenty-four?
So, I'll do kind of a group presentation again on five twenty-four. And I will highlight, there are some revisions for these, five twenty-four, five twenty-five, and five twenty-five point one. There are some revisions to these. I, I want to call out Marcus Malazo and Kristi Musman, Technology and Communications, looking these policies over. For five twenty-four, there are some revisions on page four and five of that policy. One is the, under filter is, is letter D, is just a clarification that comes through the Director of Technology. And then, on the other page is Electronic Technology Acceptable Use Agreement. So, earlier this evening, you, you heard that, you know, because of COVID, we've gone to a one-to-one device deployment. And so, when we do the online enrollment process, every time a student turns on that, or not every time, but the first time that they turn that on to log in their credentials, they have to accept the district's tech, electronic technology acceptable, acceptable use policy when they complete that device enrollment. So, there's that information they have to go through. We used to do a paper and pencil version and then catalog, catalog that, but this is done electronically, so it's much more efficient. And then, annually, staff will be reviewing and accepting the same policy. And so, that will capture new staff that are hired into the district, but that will be an annual process that we will be moving forward with. If you'd like me to keep going on five twenty-five.
I've got a quick question.
Oh, yeah, and I just want to note one thing. It looked to me on this last page, under B, under Parents Responsibility.
Yes.
There was a cross-out, but it wasn't highlighted like the other one. So, it says, and the supervising teacher.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so, just to make that goal. And then, Mary, you had a question?
Yes, you know, first of all, I, I agree with the changes, I don't have a problem with it. But I did want to know how, you know, should we adjust this, or how is an adjustment appropriate or not appropriate because of the number of distance learners with the lockdown devices? They couldn't connect some of them to their local printers, to other things. Is there, do we have a easier procedure? Or how?
We made changes, it was pretty dynamic. At first, we started with a very lockdown device, and as we heard from parents and stakeholders about the abilities or the inabilities of the devices, we made adjustments on the fly. So, we did open up like printing on the Chromebooks, and some of the other examples as well. So, we adjusted, we tried to stay dynamic and flexible.
Marcus, can you use the mic?
At the end, well. Sorry. So, just to repeat what I said, is that we tried to stay dynamic. We started with a really tightly locked-down device, and as we heard from stakeholders about needs or wants or needs, we adjusted as we saw appropriate. One example was printing on the Chromebooks. You know, we heard a lot of requirements for that, and it wasn't an option at first, but then we made that change. So, as we heard from our stakeholders, we, and, you know, in consultation with teaching and learning, we, we adjusted on the fly when needed. The point about some of the policy change about the acceptable use policy, we're trying to get away from paper pencil and digitize that and do that through the enrollment process. So, when a student does get a device for the first time, they have to at least scroll through the acceptable use agreement and check a box before they even proceed down, further down the enrollment process. They can't move on until they do that. So, we, we are working through that, and we'd like to digitize that with the staff as well.
Just out of curiosity, when you were talking about that, how easy it is for parents and students to go back and actually read or check that acceptable use policy, so that they know that they're in bounds?
You're asking how easy it is for?
For them to go back, find it, check it, read it, et cetera, because obviously, with everyone else, with every other ULO, right? You just click and go.
Scroll down.
Exactly.
The creative ones actually tell you, wow, you're a fast reader. You really went through that pretty quickly, so that's a little pop-up, but that, we're not doing that.
Probably good.
So, you know, it is, it's fairly easy through the enrollment process. But once, once you check the box in advance on, then, then you would have to go back to our, you know, the website to, to review that policy. So, but what I'd like to do is make that more obvious and more accessible, so, for all stakeholders.
Yeah, and then, thank you. Michael, you had a question?
Very naive question, but for the younger students who are now getting devices that weren't before, I assume there's some arrangement where the parent goes through that user agreement with them.
As we roll that out and digitize it, that would be expected, as, as the primaries, they would have a parent do it.
Thank you.
I have a question, and I know this may open up a can of worms, but I'm going to answer. As far as security, as far as what's acceptable on the devices, how much do we have control of that when it's on a home network?
Yep.
As compared to here, and what are we doing to ensure, basically, that bad things don't happen?
Great question. So, I'll try to keep it brief, and if you want to do a deeper dive, I'm happy to have that conversation offline. But we do have two internet filters. They both work off-prem and on-prems, which means we have the Apple default for Apple devices, and then we also have a proof of concept with our LineWise Family Zone filter. That filter travels with the device, so whether you're on-prem here in the district or off-prem at home, the filters still work, they still apply. And we are CIPA compliant. We have a list of categories that the filter blocks. We also, with our new filter that we're doing this proof of concept, get red flag alerts when a student does a search for something that's deemed inappropriate. So, it's a new product for us, has a huge feature set that we're just learning and how to use and work through. But, and then, when they're on-prem, they actually have three filters, because the firewall's doing some filtering as well. So, we do have filtering that does travel with the device both on-prem and off-prem. Sorry, next argument.
So, so, as far, so, when we get that red flag and it's happened, we have a process to notify the parent or somebody?
Yep, and right now, what we're red-flagging is mental health issues, suicide, depression, bullying. And we are notifying the building principals when we see those red flag alerts. But we're looking to expand that as well for other searches that are deemed red flag alerts. We're working through that right now, how we notify the building principals and the communication process.
To me, it sounds like, well, with eight, almost nine thousand students, the amount of data that, I mean, we're going through and red-flagging, I mean, to me, it sounds like that could be like someone's job, basically. I mean, is that, it's a pretty big workload?
SIM that alerts on this stuff, so that all the logs and stuff like that are?
The logs are being generated, and then we can auto-send that out to the appropriate people. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, do you have a SIM, a system incident event management system that actually reads the logs, catalogs them, and then sends out the alerts that you need?
You do it?
I mean, introduction with our new product. So, no, again, this is a new product for us. So, when, when this new, this new filter generates a red flag report, we're manually going through those red flag reports currently. So, it's, it's new to us.
I'm assuming there's a way to automate that, maybe?
There's a way to automate the messages going to the appropriate people, saying, hey, this, this student or this individual generated a red flag alert. Here's what they searched. You can automate that process? But again, it's, we're in proof of concept with this new tool, so we're.
Right, I get it. I mean, I think it's, I think it's really good. I think it's, I mean, I think it's something that's obviously needed with the amount of devices we have going out there, and what kids can get into. And I think parents, I mean, I think that's really helpful. And I think, is there some, in the agreement, I haven't read it totally, no. But that, the responsibility of the parent, what is the responsibility of the parent as it, as it relates to the device and what's happening at home?
Yep, it's on our website.
Okay.
It's under, there's two sources for it. There's the one-to-one device program, or web feature of our website. And there, and then there's also another subset page of family resources. But there's a whole call-out about cyber, cybersecurity, cyber safety, families' responsibilities, and it does tie back to this policy five twenty-four, so, lots of calls. And, you know, we're having conversations on whether or not, it's, I won't say it's buried in our website, but it is under maybe two or three clicks, and there's, we're having conversations about possibly bringing that up to the front homepage and making it more accessible.
Yeah. Well, I think with the, with, you know, where we're at right now, and how, how much it's being used, that probably would be helpful. I, and I know that, I mean, I'm asking these questions, obviously, because we get asked as the board, some of these at times. So, I think it's just important to have, and out there and be talked about, so. Does anyone else have any other questions on this one?
Have questions, but nothing, I mean, Barracuda SSL visibility and use of VPN, so clear text passwords are not flying across the network.
Right.
That's, but that's not a privacy issue for the students browsing, so that's fine.
All right, five, we took five twenty-four and five, I'm sorry, I'm just going to make sure. We did five twenty-five as well, or are you going to go through that one now?
Five twenty-five, just, they do have a, a couple of revisions there as well regarding podcasts, protection and privacy of student records, and Electronic Technologies Acceptable Use Policy. So you see those revisions there. And then on five twenty-five point one, I don't believe there.
I don't see anything.
There is a minor revision in the purpose statement regarding iPods and MP3s, a little dated. First, sorry, for some.
Wow, that's something I guess.
So. With that, I think that, that's our, our cohort of technology policies. And again, I appreciate the leadership of Mr. Malazo and Ms. Musman on these particular policies. There's a lot of day-to-day things that are happening, you know, communications, making sure we're clear. There's a lot of different things that, that, where these policies are tested every day. And so, you know, behind the scenes, you know, there, there's a lot of moving parts. And it's not always the, the most interesting, but as you hit on, you, you, safety, security, compliance, you know, making sure passwords and information is not flying around, you know, haphazardly. And ultimately ensuring that our kids have a safe experience in a digital environment. So that, you know, that, that's, that would be my soapbox for this evening on, on these two, on these policies.
I do have one question, and you brought it up beautifully, Marcus, when you talked about we're, we're SIPA compliant, all this kind of stuff. Again, there's a lot of statutes that require us to do stuff because we're owning the network the kids are on. And, and I've always been a fan of actually placing the statute in the policy because, again, if we ever write anything that we try to enforce that is in contradiction to the statute, then, then the, the statute is the one that holds water over the policy. So just putting it in there so there isn't any confusion, or at least less confusion as we're trying to describe it, would be helpful. So the COPA, SIP, et cetera, would be nice.
And I, I'd just say for the most part, we don't really put statutes in there just because they change, numbers change.
But at the end of the day, they also trump any board policy.
Anything, right.
Usually the link in the, the, the statute website doesn't change. It's the data underneath that, that changes now. So they've been pretty good with that one.
Any other questions or comments on those? So those will come back, the next meeting for a first read.
Correct.
All right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, am I next? Yes, look at that. Nothing exciting to report here. It's the same as last time. I don't think anything's changed. And so with two oh five, the open and close meetings, that is a second read, and so that will come forward at our next board meeting for approval. If anyone has questions on that one? Two eleven, no change to that since last time as well. So that one will come forward, barring any changes. Okay, and then two twelve, same there. I think we talked about everything there. That's been the same. Two thirteen.
Stacy, I do have a question about two thirteen.
Two thirteen, yep.
We, you know, we are planning on making changes, let's say to the FLYR, to put the finance and do the committee back in. And we still do have, and I, and I, you know, and I'm proud that we do have at least two, I wish there were at least three board members on the curriculum committee. But our policy still says one.
Right.
You know, and are we going to, we talked about after we do the, the, the finance committee thing for the, and all that, that we would come back and revisit this?
Right, and I think we talked about the retreat.
Yeah, yes, at the retreat.
We'll talk, I mean, to me, that's a perfect time for, like, to have some discussion.
Right, I just want to point that out because it, it was, we approved the policy. We are stating we are going to come back and review it this year even, even though the next revision.
Oh, isn't due, yes. I think, yeah, if we did anything substantially changing of anything from our, we would bring it back and then put it through the process. Yep. Okay, with that, we go to six oh five. Jeff's coming up on that one, yep. And I just want to make a note that, that is the end of the two hundreds. It only took us about a year and a half. So I just want to, that's a hangover from last year's board. Go ahead, Jeff, sorry. Six oh five.
I think all of these, six oh five, six oh five point one, point two, point three, point four, and five fourteen point one have stayed the same in the last, since the initial presentation and last time, so.
I thought there was a change on six oh five point one. I have a note on that, and there's something highlighted elementary or something like that.
Yeah, so that, so staffing of activities.
Yep.
So after the last time, one of our elementary principals reached out and said, you know, when we think about activities, it's not just elementary principles, there's also activities generally. So it's a, it's basically something where if we're looking at staffing of activities, it's the principle of the area. So it's not just elementary. And so it's just, we took that elementary piece off of it. And it's, you know, we, they work in consultation with the principals on any staffing of activities, and so that's.
No matter what level, basically.
Correct.
So it's just universal?
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
That would, that would be the only change.
Okay. Any questions on any of those? Okay, so those, all encompassing there will come forward at the next board meeting for approval. Superintendent relations.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeff and, and Marcus and Kristi on that. Yeah, so under superintendent relationships, what I just want to go through this evening is a little update on the Ready to Learn Plan. And just want to be sure that the board is aware of the work that we're doing right now, the considerations that we have, and are viewing public as well. As you all know, last Wednesday, the governor and the Minnesota Department of Education provided additional information and updated the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. I think the key thing to remember there is that at Prior Lake Savage area schools, we already were doing what the governor directed. He allowed schools to come back as soon as today, secondary folks to in-person learning. And then his expectation is that all secondary students are in some form of in-person learning, either in-person or hybrid learning by March eighth. And we obviously have been in secondary hybrid learning. And actually, you've heard me say this multiple times, but, you know, really since the beginning of the pandemic, we have had students in school, as much as anybody else I know, in terms of a larger metro school district. I cannot say that for smaller districts and, at all, but it's in terms of larger metro districts. Even during, you know, December, we had early learning, classes continuing in person, and we had some of our intervention and English learners and students with IP's programming attending as well. So just wanted to make sure that I was, that, that everyone understood that what was asked by the governor we're already doing. Many other schools at this point still are not in hybrid. They're starting now to make those plans for hybrid. And there are some that are bypassing hybrid, that, that decided not to do hybrid. So they may be coming back later in March, the beginning of April, in person without that. So, you know, this becomes again, as we hear and look at what other districts are doing, I think something that I am so proud of the journey that we've taken. And I think we've done a fantastic job getting kids and keeping kids in our schools in a really safe and healthy way. Our goal has always been to get our kids and get our secondary kids back in school. And I know I've said to all of you, I think, from the beginning of the year, that it's my hope, and hope is not a strategy, but it's been my hope that we have secondary students back in in-person learning by fourth quarter. I had no data to support that when I've been saying that for the last several months. And now as we look at the data in front of us and the path in front of us, I absolutely believe that's reality, given what we know right now. So we now have more information, and that's going to help us continue to plan. You know, recognizing that we want our secondary students back, I also just want to be really upfront that, you know, we have had cases of COVID, we have had students quarantined. And I, right now, want us to continue to really watch the tracking of data to make sure that we don't rush to failure. In the last fourteen days, we had four hundred students and fifty-eight staff quarantined. And that was some elementary in-person and some hybrid, or some secondary in hybrid. So we just want to continue to watch to make sure that we're keeping kids in school. One of the changes that was made was that now we're looking at a five percent, if there's a five percent of a school that has either influenza symptoms or COVID cases, that school would have to go into distance learning. So again, we're watching the data, we're working on the mitigation strategies, and we're very excited because vaccines are continuing to come. I have a quick update on that. Last week, we were supposed to get a hundred and twenty-eight doses of vaccines for our staff from Scott County. Because of the weather south, those vaccines did not come. So we had some very disappointed staff who were all teed up to get that vaccine. It didn't happen. Well, what we found out today, and I wanted to get my notes to make sure I'm right, we got word today from Scott County, they're able to give us additional allocations this week. So because of last week's delayed, we get those hundred and twenty-eight. We're also getting an additional hundred and twenty-seven, so we will have two hundred and fifty-five of our staff on Friday that get vaccines. Now, I joked a little earlier, I'm not sure what that means about how our principals are going to handle absences, and we'll, we'll work on that and we'll do whatever we have to do to make sure that our staff get those vaccines. So really excited about that.
Mary, just really quick, when you're talking about the vaccines, did they guarantee the second doses too with that? Because, I mean, with the delay that happened?
Yeah, I, I think that, I think it's, I think the planning, you know, we get that, that appointment or you get that timeline. So I, I think it's been pretty good, Mary, but I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I think there's a pretty high degree of confidence that they're going to get those.
Okay, I just know that, that delay that you were mentioning, a lot of people missed their booster.
Oh.
So that was kind of concerning, and I didn't know if they guarantee it when they, when they allocate the doses, they say, okay, we're, we're saving a second dose for you too.
I don't, I don't have that level of detail, so sorry about that. Some of those new mitigation strategies that we're looking at, you know, what, what the updated Safe Learning Plan talks about is the six feet of social distance whenever it's feasible. With two thousand students at a high school, it's not feasible very often. Where you can't do six feet, three feet when possible, right? So there's some of that language. So right now, our, our staff are looking at the lunchroom and classrooms and what all of that will look like as more of our secondary folks come back. We're also reviewing transportation to make sure that we kind of have sectioned that out at the elementary level, and we'll do the same thing at the secondary. There's new guidance on meals and how we provide meals and, and what we can and can't do, so we're looking at that. So lots of work as we're, as we're taking a look at these things. We're continuing the COVID testing opportunities for our staff every two weeks, and we're also encouraging our families. That was one of the things that the governor and the Minnesota Department of Education said, was to encourage our families to make sure that students have opportunities to get tested as well, and we'll keep providing those resources to families as well. Talked a little bit about the vaccines, which is really exciting. And then just as we continue to plan, you know, there's the things that we're paying attention to and considering in our, our staff leaves. We need to be sure that we have staff who are able to be in our building and that we don't have too many kids who have classes where staff are, are teaching from home on accommodation, so we're paying attention to that. We also know that we've heard from some staff that once they get vaccinated, they'll go to their doctor and see if they're able to come back. So again, just looking at the importance of, of those vaccines. Obviously, we have some planning to do. Right now, most likely, we will still be looking at a four-day-a-week in-person for secondary. The Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesdays will remain at this point some kind of a flex day. We are required to provide additional prep time for our teachers who are doing really hard things, right? There, no matter what, our secondary teachers are going to have kids in front of them, and they're going to have kids that are learning from distance learning. So because of that, we're required to give some additional, provide some additional prep time to assist them. That stays in the books. So we're looking at what that Wednesday looks like, some kind of distance learning, flex learning. But just so you know, as we plan, it'll probably be four days in-person and then that, that distance learning day. Custodians are looking at what those enhanced screening protocols will look, may look differently as more kids come into the building. The lunchroom we talked about, classroom setups for more distance. The principals, the secondary principals have talked about, as they're planning for all students have the opportunity to come back to in-person, might there be an opportunity to really identify those students who maybe can get back sooner? So looking at even through this transitional time into the transition, what that could look like. And then a concern about just with more kids, the, the workload, especially on our health services staff for, for contact tracing and quarantine communication and some of those things. So just looking at what else we can, we can do with that. So just so you know, tomorrow is another big day for communication regarding this. We're going to get information to families, outline some of the things that I just said, the, the great news and the work that we have in front of us. I know that there are people who think, well, you know how to do in-person learning, you can just do it tomorrow. And we're going to be really wise and strategic with this. My biggest fear is that we move this too quickly, and then we get cases and quarantines, and we have to go to distance learning. So I want to be really wise with that. I also want to really look at, every time we have a transition, there's a, there's an adjustment and there's an interruption. So we've got kids that are making things work really, really well in hybrid, and our staff are being amazing. Our quarter ends right before spring break, you know, and I think the conversations we've had, do we bring kids back for a couple of weeks before the end of the quarter? Do we hold? So those are the conversations that we're having, just so you get a sense of kind of that timeline we're looking at. So we'll get communication out to staff and fam, and secondary families tomorrow. We are going to ask for a really brief survey, because we want to know and need to know when we say, hey, we're, we're coming back later this spring, we need to get an idea. It's not a commitment, because we're not even asking for names, but we need to get an idea of how many people will choose in-person and how many will choose distance learning. If we have twenty-five hundred kids in-person at the high school, that looks different than eighteen hundred. And Dr. Bezek and his team just need to, to plan for that around lunch tables and classrooms and all of that. So that, a communication will go to families tomorrow. We'll ask them to take that survey. We'll get a chance to look at that. And then what I communicated is that they will hear back from us by the week, by March twelfth. So I'm hoping to come back to you on the eighth with a timeline and plan and kind of having studied all of this and heard back from parents about what that looks like. So that would be my hope, that I'm able to share that with you on the eighth. If not, it'll be shortly after that. And then we'll move forward with communication to families by the twelfth and see kind of where that timeline lands. So what, what questions, what questions do you have? Yeah, I'm like, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Chair Rilla.
Um, just two points of clarification for us at the table and for people who might be listening eagerly to see what the plan looks like. And I'll ask you both at the same time. You can choose how to answer. The first is, I know there's chatter online about, well, there's other districts who've already announced they're bringing them back full-time. And, and it's my understanding, could you clarify that, maybe with the exception of one or two districts, they're making plans as we are, but they have not actually announced a date, and some are in fact skipping a hybrid transition and waiting longer. Is that true?
Yeah, happy to answer that. Actually, we could look at my texts, and I've got, I probably could tell you what every district in the metro is thinking right now. And the only, the only district that I know of that has communicated a time to come back to full in-person is Lakeville. And they are bypassing hybrid. They had a plan to come back to hybrid, I believe, maybe this week. And then they, they chose to not do that. Their sixth through ninth graders are slated to come back March twenty-second, which is the week before their spring break. The tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders are slated to come back to in-person on April fifth, which is the week after their spring break. We have a late spring break.
Yep, so just for the perception that, we're the only one who hasn't put out there when they're coming back. That's actually not true.
Well, we're back.
Right.
I think, I think the important thing in this is, we're back. Other districts are communicating when they're going to come to hybrid, right?
Right.
But we're back. We are in-person right now, so, yeah. And, you know, that's kind of been that, that hard thing throughout the last year is, you know, everybody's, everybody's doing things. everybody's doing things better than everybody else. And then I get a call from an area superintendent and they say, oh, my gosh, you guys must be doing great cause all my parents say how great you're doing. And we hear the same thing from the other districts, so.
Okay.
You know.
Thank you. The second one, just briefly for clarification for our sake and for listeners. You know, at the end of Q1, we had families make a choice with whether they would follow a district model or stay DLA for the rest of the year. Could you just clarify, in your survey, will you be providing that option for people who did commit to DLA all year to reconsider joining us?
Are.
And is it different for secondary, we're talking secondary?
We're talking secondary, yes. We are.
I apologize.
We, anybody, yes, we are, I know what we said after the first quarter, you're making a decision for the rest of the year. We are, are planning right now, and again, we've gotta make sure we can do this even with the rules that they have around those, that social distancing. But it would be our hope that anybody who wants to come back into that building, that we're able to accommodate that.
Thank you.
So yes, in the, in the communication and in the survey, we have called out that even if, even if you made that decision, what is your decision now? And it's our hope that we can accommodate that.
Anybody else, Amy?
Yeah, so, um, in our communication with everyone tomorrow, are we gonna talk about the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, it's both in the communication and then in the survey where they, where they make that choice. But yep, we, we just do a parenth when we say in-person learning. And, you know, it's gonna be frustrating to some people because I have in it likely four days a week. I mean, we just, we've had like three days to plan and given what we have. So, so we're putting out as much as we possibly know at this time, and there's certainly some disclaimers. But I don't know, um, the only other thing that we would be able to do in order to get that required prep time is to change the time of our regular, our, our five, five days. And that impacts all of our elementary scheduling, all of our busing, all of everything. So the Wednesdays have really served a nice purpose to provide additional supports and interventions for students. And the Wednesdays might look different than they do right now at the secondary. We might have abbreviated synchronized classes, you know, for the hours. We just, again, I, I, principals.
For planning purposes, it's helpful to know that that's the intent.
Yep.
Or that's what we're trying to do.
Yep, that Wednesday's most likely will still be a distant, uh, will be a distance learning day, a flexible day, but we'll be in-person Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
And then, um, secondly, parents are asking, um, at, at the high school level about graduation and prom.
Oh, great question. Yeah, um, so I just, I want you to know, I want you to know that weekly, I am on, uh, a telephone call with Minnesota Department of Education and superintendents every Thursday afternoon at four o'clock. And for the last two weeks, I mean, they understand the urgency, especially around those two questions. And for the last two weeks, they've said, we'll get guidance, we'll get guidance. So again, Thursday, we heard we would get guidance this week, um, so I hope we do.
Thank you.
And as soon as we get guidance, um, we'll, we'll be planning to see what, what we possibly can do to, um, make something that feels semi-normal to our students, uh, especially to our seniors, um, in this crazy time.
We have dates on the calendar, I know there's dates on the calendar.
Yeah, we have dates. And you know, the great thing especially about graduation for us is we do it outside.
Yeah.
And, you know, we can have students six feet apart on our stadium. And we probably can't put five thousand people in the stadium, I'm guessing, but there's.
Put a few.
There's gonna be some options, I think, so. Yeah, so thanks, Amy, for the question. And I'll be, as soon as we get more information on it, we'll, we'll get to work so we can communicate and plan to see what's possible.
All right, thanks for the update.
Yeah, yeah, and thanks. And I know, you know, just for the listening public too, I, I know that there's varying degrees of, of perspective on this. And I know there's people that want students back tomorrow, four days a week, um, and some who are afraid and would rather wait for a little while later. So just know that we are trying to balance all of this, be really wise. We are delighted that we've got kids in-person, at least some now, and delighted that we have the guidance that's gonna help us move forward to getting them all back yet this spring.
Yeah, and I think that's important too, is the guidance. So I think just from a public standpoint, the local guidance, you know, like that we've, that people have talked about for the whole time. We have that now, like in, in detail that we can go and do what's right for our specific zip code and whatever.
Right, that, that original scale, the Minnesota Safe Learning Scale, the only place right now that that still really comes into place is when, when and if we ever got that ten or below on that, the county case numbers per ten thousand, then we wouldn't have to worry about any, um, kind of concerns with social distancing.
But otherwise, that number is pretty much, you're gonna have to hear about that number anymore.
And we're tracking it, you know, just for our purposes, we're, we're ta, tracking it weekly, both at the elementary and the secondary level, just to see what that looked like.
I think the five percent in the building, like that's definitely, like, so you can react at a local level.
Yep.
Of what, what needs to be done. So I think, I think that's really encouraging. And obviously, getting our secondary students back, I think that's been the goal the whole time, so. Um, it's good news.
Yeah, it really is.
Um, I don't.
I have one other quick update, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah.
Um, just, just kind of ironic, I've been in some conversations over the last couple of weeks. Um, and they've all kind of centered around equity and inclusion and building cultural bridges with folks in our community. And there's been some with our, with our Prior Lake Rotary. And, uh, Stacy and I had a conversation with the Prior Lake Mayor and city administrator. Um, our, uh, coalition of teachers of color have been doing some amazing outreach. Um, and so just as these conversations continue to come, I know that, uh, we met as a, a public engagement legislative committee today. And just kind of looking at, as, as we're hearing others reaching out and saying, hey, is there something we could all do together? Just kind of wanted to get a sense from the board, um, is that the committee that kind of moves and thinks about some of that work as it comes forward? Or, um, what's, what's the best route forward with some of, some of those conversations?
I mean, from my standpoint, it seems like that's the group, that's one of the, their areas that they've been, you know, strengthening for us as a district. So, yeah, I think, um, I think it's important to obviously have the board as a whole, know the direction as to which going, but for percolating ideas and that kind of thing. I definitely think that that's, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but that's a spot that definitely would be appropriate.
There's definitely a desire in the conversations I've had for, um, yeah, how do, and I don't think anybody has an answer, you know? And I think if it wasn't COVID, I know one of the things we talked about, um, four years ago, five years ago, when we had folks from Eden Prairie and Shakopee and Prior Lake come together for the World Cafe, which then resulted in the Reimagine Minnesota work. Like, there are so many opportunities, there could be so many cool events like that. And we just, right now, we're limited. But I think those are some of the things that people are wondering about is, um, and then what's our role in that? What's our role in leading or supporting or partnering or whatever? So, um, just some very real, rich conversations about, uh, continuing to, um, to make our community, um, have, have more equity inclusive focus and make sure we are welcoming all, so, thank you.
Great. Okay, um, public forum, there was no comments received today by noon, so there's no statements to read. Um, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting tonight, so thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Enrique.
Take care.